We've all agreed at your floor. We've all agreed at your floor.
You know, if we would just stop everything and have a straightened out period.
I did see that I believe you were supposed to say this.
So you're trying to say you're always checking what is.
I was just laughing to myself when I was in there.
Having said. So coming on to you, which are not shocked, which is trying to reach you too, which is not that.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is 6:30, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting of the Alpharetta City Council to order. I will note for the record that all members of council are present in the building and accounted for, although Councilman Merkel had to go grab his readers right quick. So if you will, please stand and join us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And we do have a couple of proclamations this evening. So if members of the National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution, will come forward and join me, we'll do a proclamation for Veterans Day and another for the National Amer- National Native American Heritage Month. Good evening. Thank you for once again requesting these proclamations, not as though we would not have noticed and taken recognition of Veterans Day, but if you would, please say a little bit about why you're here.
My name's Donna Lautermet. I am the Regent of the Patriots of Liberty, Daughters of the American Revolution Chapter here in Alpharetta. The missions of the DAR is to honor our veterans, patriotism, education, and historic preservation. Many of you might have seen the flags that we placed over at Rest Haven and Conview and on Big Creek to honor our veterans. And we also passed out last week about eighty of goodie bags to veterans at various assisted living homes and also community residences, and they really appreciated just that little treat, you know, and to say thank you to them for their patriotism and, you know, supporting them there in the military, just saying thanks. Did a lot to them, and, you know, you'd see the smile on their faces. Some of the assisted living homes, you know, we couldn't come in because of COVID. And last year, we hosted over here at the cemetery at Rest Haven, the Reese Across America. And this year, because of COVID, and because of large gatherings, we're unable to do that. So the Daughters of the American Rev- it's hard to speak in this mask. The Daughters of American Revolution and our chapter is supporting the Georgia National Cemetery, and we're sponsoring Reese there for the veterans this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for honoring those who've served.
Sure.
So now, I will read the proclamation. It is a proclamation by the Mayor and Council of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia, Veterans Day 2020, whereas citizens of Georgia and the United States of America live in freedom because of the contributions and personal sacrifices made by those who have served and by those now serving in the armed forces. And whereas our nation has fought and continues to fight battles around the world for the ideals of liberty and justice, the words of that first Veterans Day proclamation signed by President Eisenhower still ring true. Let us solemnly remember the sacrifices of all those who fought so valiantly on the seas, in the air, and on foreign shores to preserve our heritage of freedom, and let us re-consecrate ourselves to the task of promoting and enduring peace so that our efforts shall not have been in vain. And whereas Georgia has always provided its best and brightest sons and daughters to serve bravely in America's armed forces, we remember with somber and grateful hearts those men and women who have served in the military with distinction and valor and offer sincere prayers for those who continue to defend the principle on which our nation was founded. And whereas we will endeavor to always honor the contributions and sacrifices of the millions of Georgians who have, over the centuries, served in the military and the tens of thousands presently serving both at home and abroad. And whereas the advent of the all-volunteer military has reduced the number of individuals and families with only personal connection to the armed forces, resulting in decreased awareness of the importance of the accomplishments of those who have served. And whereas the state of Georgia is home to more than 776,000 veterans and tens of thousands of our nation's military families, we are proud to recognize our country's veterans and extend the appreciation of our citizens to those who wear the uniform of the United States Armed Forces and serve on the front lines preserving freedom and liberty. Now, therefore, we, the Mayor and City Council of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia, do recognize November 11, 2020, as Veterans Day in the City of Alpharetta and encourage all our citizens to observe and appreciate the sacrifices and contributions of our veterans who fought for peace and defended democracy on our land and abroad.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. If you would, if we have any veterans here, and I know that we probably do, if you would stand so we can recognize you at this time? And we don't, I am surprised. Well, thank you to all who did serve. Proclamation by the Mayor and City Council of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia, and this one is for National Native American Heritage Month, whereas Native American Heritage Month began as an effort to gain a day of recognition for the contributions made by the first Americans and was expanded, resulting in the month of November being recognized as National Native American Heritage Month. And whereas the history and culture of our great nation have been significantly influenced by contributions of the Native Americans made to the establishment and growth of the United States. And whereas it was the Native Americans who taught the settlers how to harvest their own crops and survive in their new country. Additionally, Native Americans have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today. And whereas their rich culture, traditions, and history are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States. And whereas in honor of National Native American Heritage Month, community celebrations, as well as cultural, artistic, educational, and historical activities have been planned. Now, therefore, we, the Mayor and City Council of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia, do recognize National Native American Heritage Month and are grateful for the many contributions made to our great country.
Thank you. We appreciate your support and the council and the community. Thank you very much.
Next item up on this evening's agenda is the consent agenda. And on the consent agenda, we have the council meeting minutes from the meeting of November 2, 2020. Is there anyone who would like to remove anything from the consent agenda this evening? Seeing none, I'll call for a motion.
Don't move here. Second.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Councilman Merkel and a second by Councilman Burnett. Any discussion? All those in favor of the consent agenda, please vote yes. Otherwise, vote no. And it does pass six one, or excuse me, unanimously with Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell abstaining because he was not here on that occasion. So that'll wrap up the consent agenda, and we'll move on to our public hearing items. The first item that was on the agenda was CU-20-08 Peach Coffee Roasters Henderson Commons, and that will be deferred. That item has been deferred by the applicant to the Planning Commission meeting on Thursday, December 3, 2020, and will neither be heard nor considered this evening. So the first item we will discuss this evening will be MP-20-05 Advanced Care Medical, 3900 Brookside Parkway. Mr. Woodman, I believe you have the floor.
The first item before you this evening is a master plan amendment to add clinic as a permitted use in Pod D of the Brookside Master Plan. The applicant proposes to convert the former Arby's Restaurant with Drive-Thru to an urgent care clinic for advanced care medical on a 1.05 acre site, Zone C2, general commercial. Clinic is a permitted use in the C2 district as well as the master plan pods A, B, and C. However, it is not listed as a permitted use in Pod D. Have the location map up on the overhead. The subject property is located at 3900 Brookside Parkway. This is the southwest corner of Old Milton Parkway and Brookside Parkway. The property and surrounding properties are Zone C2, except for the property across Old Milton Parkway is the Penbrook subdivision, which is Zoned R10. Tyres Plus and Brewster's Ice Cream are located to the west. Zeica Restaurant is located to the south. Chevron Gas Station is located to the east. And the comprehensive land use plan designation of the property is commercial, which does allow the proposed use. The Brookside Master Plan was approved in 1997. It's a 132-acre plan development with office and retail uses. Pod D has a land use designation of commercial, which allows a variety of commercial and office uses. While a medical office is allowed, a clinic is not listed as a permitted use in Pod D. Here's a street view of the property. This is, again, the former Arby's. It's a little bit closer up. And this is the applicant's site plan, which is basically the survey of the property since they're reusing the existing site. The, um, the drive-thru facility wraps around the back of the property. This is Old Milton Parkway, Brookside Parkway. The drive-thru facilities wrap around the back of the property, so this area will be removed, and these parking spaces here will be restriped. The access will continue from Brookside Parkway to the property. The UDC requires seventeen parking spaces for the proposed use, of which there are sixty-seven parking spaces on the property after the restriping. It was brought up at the Planning Commission meeting if the applicant would be willing to remove some of the excess parking spaces. At the Planning Commission meeting, the applicant was not able to make a commitment to that. However, we have since discussed that further with the applicant, and they have agreed to remove additional excess parking spaces. Specifically, they've agreed to these parking spaces out here along Old Milton Parkway and remove those and replace them with additional green space. So I do have an added condition that we'll address that at the end of the presentation. Of course, the landscape strip along Old Milton Parkway and the corner of Old Milton Parkway and Brookside Parkway look like they're lacking some of the required trees, so we also have a condition to deal with that. The proposed clinic would generate sixty-five weekday daily trips or seven hundred and thirty-four less trips than the previous fast food restaurant. This item was shown to the public at the October 14 Community Zoning Information Meeting. There were no comment, public comments at that meeting. Staff has reviewed the request and finds that the master plan amendment does not conflict with the established criteria. The request is compatible with the properties in the vicinity which are developed with office and commercial uses. The use would represent a significant reduction in trips generated from the property, but if approved, conditions are recommended limiting the use to an urgent care clinic only. Forgot to mention, there is an elevation that was submitted by the applicant. However, this is a typical elevation that they would be using at other locations. So this will give you an idea of what the applicant would look to do with respect to reusing the outside of the building. And we do have some conditions that address the exterior of the building as well. This item was considered at the November 5 Planning Commission meeting. There were no public comments at the meeting. After discussion, Planning Commission did recommend unanimous approval, subject to the following conditions. One, property shall be developed substantially in accordance with the submitted plan prepared by CESO dated 7/16/2020, except for modifications required to comply with the conditions below. Two, add clinic as a permitted use in Pod D of the Brookside Master Plan at 3900 Brookside Parkway. Condition three, clinic shall be limited to an urgent care clinic only. Because we do not, we only define clinic in our code, but we do not define urgent care clinic, I would propose adding a sentence to the end of condition three that says urgent care clinic shall be defined as "medical care provided for illnesses or injuries which require prompt attention but are typically not of such seriousness as to require the services of an emergency room." Condition four deals with the exterior building modifications, and there are, it, it conditions it subject to final approval by the Design Review Board. Existing bricks shall remain and shall not be painted. Primary color shall not be visible on the exterior of the building, and glass shall not extend to the ground. Five, prior to CO, our certificate of occupancy, developers shall address drainage issues resulting from a clogged inlet at the southwest corner of the property, as approved by staff. Condition six, pedestrian access shall be provided to the building, uh, from the building to the adjacent public sidewalk, including striping through the parking lot, as approved by staff. Seven, if necessary, additional right-of-way shall be provided along Old Milton Parkway and Brookside Parkway for future sidewalk enhancements and roadway improvements. Additional right-of-way shall not impact existing parking and landscaping on the property. The reason why we have that in there, the GDOTS project along Old Milton Parkway will not have any right-of-way impacts to the site as currently proposed. However, we do have a trail system within the Brookside Master Plan. So this is the applicant's property is, is located here, and the highlighted area represents a trail system through the Brookside Master Plan. So we could see a condition where you would potentially want to make a connection from Old Milton Parkway back into these trails. So that's why we have condition number seven in there. Condition eight, drive-thru facilities shall be completely removed, including drive-thru window and impervious areas associated with the drive-thru lane. Former drive-thru areas shall be landscaped with tree, shrubs, and ground cover, as approved by DRB. Condition nine, developers shall assess and replace dead, dying, or missing required landscape material, including missing trees in the landscape strip along Old Milton Parkway and at the corner of Old Milton and Brookside Parkway. Corner of Brookside Parkway and Old Milton Parkway shall be heavily landscaped with ornamental plantings. Condition ten, developers shall provide the required bicycle racks. Condition twelve, building site and landscape plans shall be subject to review and approval by the DRB. And as I mentioned before, the applicant had indicated that they would be willing to remove some additional excess parking on the property, so I am recommending a condition twelve that states developers shall work with staff to replace some of the excess parking with green space. Replacement of parking with green space shall not require a land disturbance permit. And then just one other item that I just wanted to mention to you, doesn't affect the conditions. One council member mentioned to me the curved low wall at the corner of Old Milton Parkway and Brookside Parkway. There is a note here that is barely visible, and that note says "stone monument sign." That wall is not intended, I've discussed this with the applicant, and that wall is not intended to be used as a monument sign. The previous monument sign for Arby's was located in this location, as well as here off Brookside. There is a monument sign allowed for each street frontage, so I just wanted to clarify that. And that concludes the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Burnett, I believe you had a question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Woodman, thank you. On, with respect to condition number three, clinic shall be limited to an urgent care clinic only. That would continue should said cust- said tenant vacate the premises, correct?
Correct.
For the next owner slash tenant?
That would apply to any clinics within Pod D of this master plan.
Just so I know, what are some of the other uses for clinic, the clinic use in general?
Um, there's a variety of different types of clinic. Um, you know, urgent care, you could have like a pain management clinic, um, just a variety of things that could be out there. And that's why we just wanted to make sure that it was limited to just the urgent care clinic use.
Any other questions from council at this time? Thanks, sir. Would the applicant like to come forward at this time?
Thank you, Mayor and Board, for your time, and thank you, Michael and staff, for your time working through this project. I really don't have anything to add. Michael's done a fantastic job of presenting our project. I can tell you, as, you know, the engineer for the project, the owner, and the end user are excited about this project moving forward. This is the second one we actually have in this area that we're going to be developing. So they are excited about being in this area. And I'm here for any questions you might have.
Do we have any Councilman Hypes?
Good evening. Like your project. Excited about fewer cars going in and out of the Arby's as well, so I know that area very well, so excited about your project. Uh, condition number one is the property being developed in, substantially in accordance with the CESO plan, which shows the location of the monument sign. Are you okay if we amend condition number one? Would it be acceptable to you to note that any monument sign would be in the northwest corner of the property rather than the northeast corner?
Yes, we're fine with that, and that will be corrected as we move forward to plans.
Thank you. Councilwoman Richard, I believe you've indicated you may have a question as well?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to also confirm that with the additional changes that Michael proposed tonight with the definition of urgent care as well as the parking, that you're comfortable with the language in those conditions?
Yes, I presented that language to the owner, and he is acceptable to everything.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant at this time? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Cobb, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
We do not, sir.
But if anyone would like to come forward and speak on this zoning item, now is your opportunity to do so. Seeing no one, we'll close the public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will offer a motion to approve MP-20-05 Advanced Care Medical slash Brookside Master Plan. I will make a change to addition to condition number one. The last sentence shall read, "any monument sign located," a monument sign will be located in the northeast corner versus the northwest corner? Is that correct? Or I have it flipped? Okay. If any monument sign is needed, it will be located in the northwest corner versus the northeast corner. And I don't have any other changes to the conditions twelve through, I'm sorry, two through twelve. So that's the end of my motion.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Richards and a second by Councilman Merkel, and that was to approve MP-20-05 Advanced Care Medical, 3900 Brookside Parkway, with the conditions as read by staff, and the addition on item number, recommendation number one, to indicate that a monument sign would be on the northwest corner, if there is to be one at all. Everyone clear on the motion? Any discussion? Councilman Merkel?
I just appreciate everybody who worked on this. You know, as the city continues to evolve, we're going to see more and more change to what's already out there. We've experienced in the last several years, new growth, new construction, but when we start to look at things and repurpose, and you can repurpose a fast food restaurant into a medical facility, I think you're heading in the right direction. So I compliment those that are, that are involved with this one, and I encourage others that are contemplating some changes to look at this project as well as they consider other parts of the city for the changes. So I very much appreciate this. And like Councilman Hypes, I drive by it all the time.
Any other discussion? That being said, all those in favor of the motion to approve, please vote yes. Otherwise, vote no. And the item does pass unanimously. Next item up on the public hearing items for this evening will be PH-20- a little commotion going on over there? PH-20-14 Unified Development Code text amendments, the updates to the International Building Code and fire references. Mr. Woodman? And I see City Attorney Sam Thomas stands at the ready to read the ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The item before you is consideration of text amendments to the UDC and Code of Ordinances to replace references to specific building codes with a reference to the city's building permitting procedures documents. The purpose of this change, we identified a change that was needed within the historic preservation ordinance. There were references to the 2012 edition of the International Building Code and Fire Code, and those have been updated to the 2018 edition. So instead of every time these building codes are updated with new additions, we thought we needed to find a better way to deal with that, because we also reference several of these building codes in our Code of Ordinances, which is what you see here. And you can see all the references to those building codes have been stricken through. This is in the Code of Ordinances. And replaced with a reference to see are commercial, residential, and swimming pool permitting procedures. And I'm going to use the commercial permitting procedures document, which is an administrative document that staff can update, does not require going through this process of updating the code. So you'll see on the table of contents, you'll see a reference, actually, no, I take that back. I apologize. On page four of each of these permitting procedure documents are the applicable building codes. So you'll notice that these, the reference that sends you to this, to the permitting procedure documents, this is a document that, like I mentioned, staff can update as we have changes in code, instead of changing the Code of Ordinances. have changes in code, instead of changing the code of ordinances and the UDC every time. So that concludes—actually, I take that back. This item was presented at the November 5 Planning Commission. There were no public comments, and Planning Commission did recommend unanimous approval. And that concludes the presentation. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Councilman Hypes?
Mr. Woodman, I know that we had a chance to go over this earlier. Referring back to the Georgia statute, Section 8-2-20, 1 through 9 are found in that statute, but subsequent to that, items number 10 and down below are found in these procedures. Is that more or less what you—we found out?
Correct.
I read in paragraph A that these are city requirements if they're found in the statute, and that takes care of the first nine. But then afterwards, it just says "see procedures," and I don't even know if procedures are outside our code or actually found in the code. Are they in the code or outside the code?
There—this procedure document is not physically within our codes.
Well, I would defer to City Attorney Sam Thomas, and we talked offline a little bit. But before we have a second reading of this, I would strongly suggest that we have some language making it in the code, so that we have a legal requirement when it comes to sprinklers and not just a procedure that's by reference to an external document. Now, of course, I defer to Mr. Thomas over here, but—
I tend to agree with that, because I'm actually seeing the language, and I think we can expand on that and make it—clarify it for the second reading, and I'll get with you on the language that we'll make the change on. But I think this is fine for first reading. It gets the concept, and we'll expand on that for a second reading, should it be approved.
Any other questions from council? Thank you, Mr. Woodman. Mr. Thomas, do you mind reading the ordinance, please?
Article 2 of the Unified Development Code and Chapter 8, Article 2 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Alfreda, Georgia, to replace references to the latest additions of the International Building and Fire Codes and Unified Development Code, subsection 2.9.5B, with references to Chapter 8, Article 2 of the Code of the Ordinances, to replace latest edition building code requirements with references to the city's building permitting procedures to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Cobb, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
We do not, sir.
But if anyone here would like to come forward and speak on this change in the ordinance, now is your chance to do so. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I will offer a motion to approve PH-20-14 Unified Development Code and Code of Ordinance Text Amendments, Building Codes, and the ordinance is read by Mr. Sam Thomas.
Second. We have a motion by Councilwoman Richard, and I believe the second was Councilman Hypes. I wasn't looking up, and with the mask on, it was hard to tell. So we'll say it was Councilwoman Richard and Councilman Hypes with the second to approve PH-20-14 Unified Development Code Text Amendments, Updates to the International Building Code and Fire Code References as Read by City Attorney. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve, please vote yes; otherwise, vote accordingly. And it does pass unanimously. So the next item up on the public hearing agenda is PH-20-16 Unified Development Code Text Amendments for Stormwater and Flood Plane Management. Mr. Trulove, you have the floor.
As Mayor Gil will mention, my name is Zach Trulove. I'm a stormwater management—and a stormwater engineer for the Community Development Department. I'm here presenting on public hearing item 2016, Unified Development Code Text Amendments for Stormwater Management and Flood Plane Management Ordinances. A brief background: In 2001, the Georgia General Assembly created the Metro North Georgia Water Planning District. This district was charged with creating regulations and policies for water resource protection throughout the area. These regulations and policies are to be enforced by the local governments, and these policies include stormwater management. In 2019, the district's board passed a new model ordinance for stormwater management. The cities and counties within the district have until December of 2020—or next month—to adopt the required changes. I don't want to reread the staff report. I think that you—you have that in front of you, but there are a few points I would like to bring up. First, the floodplain ordinance changes are very minor. They mainly reflect typo and a few definition changes with respect to the stormwater management ordinance. You may have seen a draft with a lot of red text and a lot of strike-throughs in it. The reason being for that is we did a reorganization of the ordinance to remove some redundancy and also make it reflect more closely the development procedures associated with permitting. The draft of the—the draft of the ordinance that you should defer to is the draft—the black and white copy with the green and blue text. The green text is mandated changes by the state that actually reflects the context or content changes associated with the update. And the blue text is the changes that staff has implemented to either clarify items that are currently enforced or to add a little bit more flexibility when it comes to regulations. The other thing that I'd—the last thing I'd like to point out is the—we are proposing to change the Alfreda Stormwater Management Design Manual, the name. This is mainly to distinguish it further from the Georgia Stormwater Management Manual. And it also—a policy handbook—calling it a policy handbook, or the Alfreda Stormwater Policy Handbook, more accurately reflects the content that's in there. It's mainly Alfreda-specific guidance. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation, and we'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Do we have any questions from council? Councilwoman Richard?
I'm surprised I'm the only one who has a question. Zach, you and I talked about this, and I spoke with Director Pete Sasevich and Jill as well. In the section S for maintenance responsibilities, the letter E talks about drainage easements. I'll wait till—
Yes.
Do you see where I'm at?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Hold on a sec. Do you have a page number, Zach? I don't.
I don't have page numbers on my copy.
Yeah, it's under S, letter S, and then it is letter E, as far as—so, the city's language here says, "Should a drainage easement only serve one property, no offsite drainage flows through the easement, whether in a conveyance or overland, the property owner may be allowed by the city to install permanent structures within the easement, or may be allowed to alter the layout of the easement." So my question to you was, the language "permanent structures" seems to be subject to interpretation?
Right.
And I—when I read that as a, you know, owner of a single-family home, I think, you know, maybe I can put my outdoor fireplace in my—you know, extends into my drainage easement. So can we—what were we trying to get to there, as far as—
The—the idea was to allow a little bit more flexibility if, say, we had a commercial development, and there was a parking lot with a catch basin that had an easement that conveyed runoff from that site only. So it would be servicing one resident, and it would be maintained by the same—or, sorry, resident or business, and maintained by the resident or business itself. So we require easements to be shown on these pipes, because the pipes need to be maintained, and we allow a certain amount of area. However, we—we have run into instances during permitting where we've—we've had requests for the easements to not meet a—meet our full 20-foot standard, to allow for some—a little bit more flexibility in the layout, or maybe to plant a tree or something along those lines. So the intent is, if it's only servicing you, then we would allow some flexibility. But per our discussion, I understand your concern, and we can definitely add some clarification to that to make sure that it's clear for residents like yourself.
Great. That's my only question.
Any other questions from council at this time? Thank you, sir. Welcome to council chambers.
Thank you.
How'd you get talked into joining all the fun tonight?
My pleasure.
Good answer. You do great work, my friend. Thank you. Oh, Sam? I almost forgot to let you read the ordinance. Thank you.
An ordinance to amend Article 3, Section 3.3 and 3.4 of the Unified Development Code of the City of Alfreda, Georgia, to modify section numbers 3.3.1 through 3.3.9, to remove sections 3.3.10 through 3.3.14, to modify text in sections 3.3.1 through 3.3.9, to modify text in section 3.4, to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Cobb, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
We do not, sir.
But if you're here to speak on this matter, or if you just feel like you need to share something with us about this item, please feel free to come forward at this time. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'll offer a motion to approve PH-20-16 Unified Development Code Text Amendments, Stormwater and Flood Plane Management, and the ordinance is read by Mr. Sam Thomas.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Richard, and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell to approve PH-20-16 Unified Development Code Text Amendments, Stormwater and Flood Plane Management, as read by the city attorney. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes to approve; otherwise, vote no. And it does pass unanimously. So that'll wrap up the public hearing for this evening, and we'll move on to the old business. First item under the old business agenda—only item under the old business agenda, actually—is PH-20-12. That is the Farmhouse Settlement Historic Designation. This is the second reading. Ms. Cook, I believe you have the floor.
Mayor and Council, there are no changes since the first reading, so have no changes to present, but if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those.
Do we have any questions from council at this time? Great job. No questions. Mr. Thomas?
An ordinance to amend Section 2.9 Historic Preservation Incentive Zoning of the Unified Development Code of the City of Alfreda, Georgia, to add Zero Morris Road to Appendix A Historic Resources Inventory, contributing historic buildings, and Appendix B Historic Resources Inventory designated historic buildings, to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Cobb, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
We do not, sir.
But if anyone would like to come forward and speak at this time, now is your chance to do so. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a motion for the second reading of PH-20-12 Farmhouse Settlement Historic Designation, as presented this evening by Sam Thomas.
I have a motion, and I have a second. I have a motion by Councilman Merkel, a second by Councilman Burnett, to approve PH-20-12 Farmhouse Settlement Historic Designation, second reading. Any discussion? Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell?
This is—this has been a long time coming, and I'm certainly glad to see that this designation is finally in place. It's taken a while, but I think it will allow us to pursue dollars that can go toward this as a historic designation now and for other purposes. And I know our historical society is thrilled to have this happen tonight, so thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the motion, please vote yes; otherwise, vote no. And it does pass unanimously. So that will wrap up the old business portion of tonight's meeting, and we'll move on to the new business. The first item up under new business is Georgia 400 Express Lane IGA with Georgia Department of Transportation. Mr. Sasevich, you are up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Freshly remember, we—about a month or so ago, did an MOU with G-DOT two months ago. This is the next phase of that, which is solidifying all the agreements. Already approved was the $4.84 million towards the aesthetics of the bridges. What this IGA will do is, they will then take our standards and prop—put them into the—our aesthetic standards of the bridges, and put it into the RFP, that is already being administered to the three shortlisted design, build, maintain firms. With that, the biggest component about the IGA from a fiscal perspective is they're requesting seven equal payments of that $4.84 million to be distributed, with the first check being administered no later than May 30 of 2021. And I did ask G-DOT for a schedule. They're going to have a final RFP will be issued in February of next year, followed by the RFPs are due in middle of April of next year, and then a award is scheduled sometime in the summer of '21, with the hope of the project starting construction no later than the first quarter of 2022. So it could go a little faster with the construction, but that's what the current schedule is. It's a four-to-five-year construction project.
Any questions from council? Councilman Hypes?
Director Pete, I was going through the IGA, and I was studying this final paragraph under Section 6.1. I don't know if you have that available to you, but I'm interested in the interpretation and application of that. It—it says, "If for any reason the local government does not produce acceptable deliverables in accordance with the approved schedule, the department reserves the right to continue with the design and construction of the project without incorporating project improvements and enhancement features, and without remittance of the local government aesthetic costs." What's your interpretation of that? What's acceptable, and what are we not getting remitted?
The acceptable is, they will give us a timeframe, usually a couple weeks, to go through some of the submittals that they may have for us to look at, as well as, you remember, Kimley Horn with Eric Bosman did a lot of the aesthetics work. They'll ask us to approve a mock-up that will be performed for the aesthetics, and they just want timely turnarounds, which we've been hitting all along within a couple of weeks.
So if I understand correctly, acceptable is a timing acceptance, not the—what we are in fact submitting to them in terms of look and design and—
Correct.
Because it says, "does not produce acceptable deliverables,"
So—
—then in accordance with the schedule.
So our deliverables were—the nice colored renderings and the aesthetic package and the lighting that has been approved by the Georgia—
So if it's been approved, that's something that won't—they won't determine to be unacceptable.
Correct, yes. They had some comments that we adjusted and worked things through.
Okay. That makes me feel better. Thank you.
Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pete, thank you. Quick question. One is under two on the recommendations. It says, "State Route 499. Do we have a new road, or is that a typo?"
Okay. I was going to get excited. The second question I have is the $4.84 million that's split into seven equal payments. This may be a same question. Is it a—is this an appropriate project to put on a subsequent T-SPOs list or bond if it's going to be seven equal payments? If this decision is made tonight, are we allowed to punt some of the funding mechanisms, or are we—is it a burden-hand that we have to have? Does that make sense? Can it be paid for with an alternate funding source besides the general fund?
I'm not sure who was better qualified, but I think the answer is, this doesn't obligate us to any particular source. So we have funding available in the current T-SPOs. However, if we still have payments, if there is a new T-SPO— However, if we still have payments, if there is a new T-SLOSS, then we can designate that when the payment is made, because we'll have to authorize each payment.
Yes.
That help? Okay. Any other questions from council? Thank you, Pete. I know it's been a long time coming. I appreciate it. Ms. Cobb, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
We do not, sir.
But if anyone would like to come forward and speak on the IGA with GDOT or the Georgia 400 improvements, now's your chance to come forward. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask the council to please award the IGA with the Georgia Department of Transportation for improvements to Kimble Bridge Road, Webb Bridge Road, and trade winds at SR 400 Express Lanes, in an amount not to exceed $4.84 million for the cost associated with the bridge aesthetics, and authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell and a second by Councilman Merkel to approve the Georgia 400 Express Lane IGA with GDOT. Is there any discussion?
Pete, I'd like to thank you and the entire staff, and also our partners over at GDOT. This has been a long, drawn-out process, as well as most things are, but you were able to be instrumental in working with them to make sure that the scheduling of the bridges do not happen simultaneously. That's not a big deal when you just hear it, but when it happens and they're trying to work on both bridges at the same time, and we're trying to deal with traffic mitigation, it's an extremely important issue, but you were able to pinpoint that and get them down to writing that that will not happen for our city. So thank you for you and the entire staff for the job that you all do.
Thank you. I'll pass on the kind words.
Please do.
Any other discussion? I will just concur with that and say that we are very fortunate to have professional staff of a caliber of you and your team, because you've been able to manage this process on GDOT's timeline as best we possibly could, and that makes us a good partner for them, which makes them a great partner for us. So thank you very much. With that being said, I'll go ahead and call for a vote on the motion to approve the Georgia 400 Express Lanes IGA with GDOT for a total project cost not to exceed $4,840,000. All those in favor, please vote yes. Otherwise, vote accordingly, and it does pass unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Thank you, sir. Next item up under new business will be the Project Management Services, North Point Streetscape LCI. Ms. Cook, you have the floor. And Pete stands at the ready if you have any questions for him.
Yes, he does, which I appreciate. Thank you, Mayor. This next item, the city was recently awarded federal funding for the design phase of North Point Parkway, and it's the Streetscape project. It was $1.6 million that we're awarded with a $400,000 match. It was funded under the Federal Aid Highway Program, which we must follow those regulations, which are the code of federal regulations, which prescribes the requirements for the procurement, management, and administration of the engineering and design-related services. Components of this community-focused project may differ slightly from the standard GDOT solutions, which may trigger a GDOT design variance process requiring extra studies, time, and negotiations with various GDOT personnel. City staff has limited experience with GDOT procedures and design, project oversight on projects when they're part, they have to follow the code of federal regulations. So what we did, meeting with Public Works, talking to Public Works, went with their recommendation, which is to use Atkins, which they have on-call, which they've managed several of the T-SLOSS and bond projects. So we requested a task order proposal from the current on-call consultant. We reviewed the scope of the task order proposal, which is for the concept phase, and we reviewed that with Public Works, of course, and we believe the proposed cost of $78,500 is reasonable and will help ensure that compliance with the federal regulations and required documentation. And this will be a multi-phase design effort, potentially spanning several years, depending on the scale of the environmental process. We will not know some of the process until GDOT actually approves it November 19th at their board meeting, then they will assign a representative specifically to this project. This initial phase is intended to get us to, if not through, the draft concept plan and report. If you remember before, we talked about doing lane diets. We talked about putting in a 12-foot sidewalk. So there'll be some engineering studies that are done in the beginning of the concept phase to determine, you know, can we do the lane diet? Is there the possibility of even lane removal, which is not likely with future development? But that's some of the part that we'll look at with the concept in the beginning. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer those. And like I said, Pete is here also, has more experience with particularly Atkins and using the consultant.
Councilman Burnett?
Kathy, is this the, we applied, they awarded us $1.6 million. Is this what Senator Perdue's office wrote us a letter in support for?
No, this is actually one, I think we applied, Councilman, last year. I think it's been over a year when we applied for this one, so I can't really recall the different support letters. And this was one that we applied for that was 20 million was the original ask. So they've actually put it in different phases. So the first phase is design. We hope that we're successful next year receiving some construction funds, but again, the original ask was 20 million.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Councilman Binder?
Director Cook, is, maybe Pete can help me too, but just going through some of the projects we've had, like the Equestrian Maintenance Center or some of our other ones, we, I don't think, sitting up here, we don't necessarily know the steps that go in from shovel in the ground or ribbon cutting. Is there a process map of what we're looking at, or what are we committing to right now, and how long out before things start to happen?
We do have a schedule, and I don't know if you want to talk about it verbally, but we do have a schedule, because it could be 18 to 30 months. I don't know if this is really tough to read, but it really depends on how much of the environmental process that they'll make us go through. And I do have, which is probably even more, I'm sorry.
Yeah, show, you got the flow chart?
I do have a flow chart.
Oh, really?
This is, you know, this is after meeting with Public Works and Pete talking to me about this, the flow chart. Yes.
With a flow chart like that, no wonder we need a consultant.
That's yours?
Yes, yes. This is the GDOT flow chart. So, you know, in the beginning, we kind of, we talked about, well, you know, why can't we do this in-house? And he did educate me very quickly on the process, so.
And this is just concept. This is not full environmental approval. And what Kathy was referring to, there's multiple types of environmental studies. And what we're going for, and we won't know if we have the ability to do this, is until a GDOT project manager has been awarded or assigned a project, is what's called a categorical exclusion. Since we're not adding capacity, we believe we'll be able to get away from that, which will shave about six months off the environmental process. Flip that, Old Mill Parkway is currently going through that, the full process, environmental. So every little bit has to be studied. We don't have to do a noise study, but we have other studies. You have environmental studies you have to go through, and that is the longest part of the project. What we're going for, and what the $78,000 is going to get us towards, is can we do a road diet, which means going from six lanes to four lanes? Will that be permitted by Georgia Department of Transportation? Or can we just do a lane diet, going from 12-foot wide lanes down to like 10 and a half? That will then determine that process. GDOT will have that approval to us, and that's where we're basically going. And there's probably about 30 steps in between all that to get that approval.
And one of the reasons it's joint between the two departments is because we, this is one area, one road project, that we really do expect redevelopment of the majority of that area. So it's important that we work with whoever's doing the engineering, the traffic studies, to make sure that they have the future land use, to know the density, proposed trips, and the mix of uses that we think are going to go on to the, with the future redevelopment.
So this is, to help me understand, a prerequisite step to see, okay, we can, we are able to move forward with this, let's start working on engineering, construction documents?
Yes. If we wanted to figure out the whole lane diet, road diet, this is a necessity.
Okay. And then our funding currently for North Point is just for this, or what other items do we have funding on the budget for as far as engineering or conceptual drawings or towards shovels on, shovels in the ground?
We haven't been awarded actual construction dollars yet, so we expect to be awarded construction dollars next year. And we hope, like I said, with redevelopment that may occur, that we get close enough quickly to try to, working on what the future can be, in case we do have redevelopment that occurs, we'll know what the plan for the roadway is.
I think we are going, Councilmember, is step one, we have an RFQ working with Tom's Department right now on the street, and that is firms to demonstrate to us that they meet all the prequalifications that are required for this project. Step two is, once GDOT awards a project manager, representatives of the city, as well as Atkins, will meet with the project manager of GDOT and figure out what is going to be required if we go to a lane diet or a road diet. Step three, then, is to take that information and write an RFP for the firms who've been at the qualifications to submit a proposal to do the work, to do the design work. And then we'll come back in front of council to recommend a ward from that point. And then from that point forward, you're looking at about three to plus years, four years.
I just, I want to...
Right away in the middle of all that.
There's two important variables, dollars and time. So we'd love to have a perfect understanding, so we're all on the same page on this. I absolutely love Kathy and your staff, your visionary leadership in accomplishing things, but I also know that there's some things that I'd like to make sure that we're all on the same page, and we're learning as we go. So I like some of the things like with the alpha loop, how we're all on board with the alpha loop, but we were kind of learning as we go. I don't want this to be kind of an open-ended alpha loop project. So would love to know, I think you set it up great. I think you got us all bought in. You've done a great job getting the property owners bought in on it. So time to put a plan together of what we're looking at is time and dollars. So I think it's good that we're already talking about construction dollars coming in, but how much of that is construction dollars versus how much we're going to need coming in versus how much we're going to need in total? So I need to know now, before we start buying in in this council, to know this is the dollars, this is the resources we got to put towards it, and let's go after it. So just want to make sure it's not as open-ended as it needs to be.
And I certainly appreciate the point. The challenge is that they can't really give us numbers until we have a design, so that's why we have to do this first, to come up with a design, and it's not going to be an easy process now that GDOT's incorporated in it, so.
And I definitely understand that point, too, but even GDOT has it where they put their estimates out for, these are the phases of planning, design, and construction, and time and dollars are estimates. So they do a good job of doing that, and so maybe leaning more towards what they do. But I know that there's ambiguity, and I'm fine in that. I just want to know.
Getting us through this concept will enable us, working with Atkins, who has the construction background and the estimating individuals on board, to provide the estimates that you're looking for.
Perfect.
Any other questions from council?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Richard?
Thanks, Pete, and thanks, Kathy. Pete, you mentioned the typical environmental studies that have to happen when you're adding capacity, and that's obviously not what we're looking to do. So can you give us some insight about when you're, we're looking at reducing, what type of environmental studies are typically undertaken in that situation?
So you have the, we have Big Creek near us, so we know the water's going to be discharged. So they're going to have a study, the discharge into Big Creek. They're going to look at the environmental, what is being removed. I mean, something as simple as, and going back way back, is the bats that are on Georgia 400 for the trail. There's some ecological studies that'd be done, some native species. So there's a bunch of little studies that are required to get us through the phases. So something as small as plant life, that has a native plant that has found its way along the corridor, possibly. More of everything of, to check the boxes, no, this doesn't exist than that it does exist.
Okay. That helps. Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Cobb, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
We do not, sir.
But if there's anyone that would like to come forward and speak on the Project Management Services for North Point Streetscape LCI, now's your chance. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'll offer, I'll ask council to please approve the Atkins North American Inc. proposal in the amount not to exceed $78,500 for Phase One, Concept Phase, Project Management Services for the North Point Streetscape LCI project, and authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Richard, a second by Councilman Burnett, and that was to approve the Atkins North American Incorporated proposal in an amount not to exceed $78,500 for Phase One, Concept Phase, Project Management Services of the North Point Streetscape LCI project. All those in favor, please vote yes. Otherwise, vote accordingly. And it does pass unanimously. The next item up will be the scanning of closed court cases. Ms. Lappin, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm bringing forward a contract with about 400 boxes worth of files that need to be scanned in order for us to move into the E Court program that we would like to move towards to become a paperless court. Currently, we have to keep 10 years' worth of data in order to, on our open records request, and all, about 200 boxes are off-site. If someone requests something in those timeframe, we have to request the box. There's a fee to request it, then we have to pay to also send it back, and we're also paying to store those boxes at the time. The turnaround time is quite hefty, especially if you're waiting on a disposition for something for your license or criminal history for your applying for a job. So I'd like to reduce the time it takes to respond to those open records requests. Also, in order to move to E Court, we need a way to look through all those 10 years' worth of data. Currently, we use Court Track. In order to move to E Court, we would have to transfer all that data into that system. There will be a cost associated and a timeline of, they weren't able to give me a timeframe because no one has used Court Track and moved to E Court, so that communication does not exist. So in order to speed up that process, if we have the data in a searchable database, then we can do that and not have to work directly into the E Court system. Do you have any answering questions, if anyone has one?
Any questions from council? Must have done a great job. There's no questions.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. Ms. Cobb, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
We do not, sir.
But if anyone wants to come forward and talk about the scanning of closed court cases, now's your chance. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve the scanning of closed court case files in an amount not to exceed $39,600, and authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Hypes and a second by Councilman Merkel, and that was to approve the scanning of closed court cases in an amount not to exceed $39,600, and authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents. Any discussion?
Thank you, Brooke. We appreciate it. Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion to approve, please vote yes. Otherwise, vote accordingly. And it does pass unanimously. Next item up on the agenda will be the Vulnerable Population Grant Program Award Recommendation. Director Harris?
Good evening, Mayor and council. This item will be seeking authorization to award five nonprofits under our vulnerable Population Grant Program, up to the amount of which will be two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand in total for those five. You may recall that we set aside ten percent of the CARES Act funding that we received reimbursement-wise from the county through our IGA, that ten percent of the CARES Act amount, the CARES Act amount was two-point-eight in reimbursement that we received, so two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand was set aside for this program. Specifically, the services are to, to assist residents of Alpharetta and families, overdue rent, mortgage assistance, utility assistance, food, nutrition, childcare, distance learning, and unforeseen emergencies, et cetera. We reviewed, I think we received seven. Before you, this evening, is five nonprofits that we believe meet, they're all active, financially viable entities, they're in the business of, of providing a lot of these services that they're requesting funding for. They are 501K organizations, they met all the requirements, we believe that they meet the mission purpose and, and they target services of this vulnerable grants program, population grant program. And those are Fulton Education Foundation for fifty thousand, Lionheart School for twenty-five-thousand, North Fulton Community Charities fifty thousand, St. Vincent de Paul fifty thousand, and Summit Counseling fifty thousand. We actually have in the agenda packet the service category that each of those entities will be providing assistance to our residents. We will work, if approved tonight, we will have executed, we will execute individual grant agreements detailing what kind of information they need to provide monthly, et cetera, and to be able to get their reimbursed funding under this grant program.
Is there any questions?
I appreciate you and Mr. Trinkett's work in putting this together, and this is our first time through this process, so we'll kind of decide how we want to administer this, we can take them individually or as a whole, but for now, if there are any questions for Director Harris, feel free to ask.
Well, before there's discussion, if we, if we're going to take them as a whole, I serve on the Board of North Fulton Charities, and I'm going to recuse myself from any vote involving North Fulton Charities, so I can either step out now, or if you're going to do them individually, and I don't want to-
Is there a preference? My preference was to do them as a group unless we wanted to take them individually.
That's fine.
My preference was similar, we discussed this, because what I wanted to avoid was this group up here picking apart which ones going to get it, which ones aren't going to get it. I, I was adamant about the point that I did not want to be part of an underwriting process, which is why we formed this committee to do it as a whole, so my recommendation is to do it as a whole, as was discussed early on, and if it's not, I think I'd recuse myself from going through these lineups one by one, because I, again, I don't think it's our position to pick.
I'll just, I'll just excuse myself, I don't think I should be participating in this discussion.
As a preponderance of precaution, that's probably a good idea. And the reason I say we could do it either way is because when I call for a motion, it depends on what motion comes forward, so I, I can't determine whether it's a motion for all five or not, so I just thought we'd try to have that discussion, but that's fine. I, I mean, we can continue, right now is the process where we ask questions regarding any of the applications here. Councilwoman Burnett?
Thank you, Tom. You had two questions. Fulton Education Foundation, I'm sure they're great, I want to put that out there. What assurances do you have from each of these that these dollars are going to Alpharetta residents? Because Fulton County, if you've ever driven it, it's not small. I want to make sure they're coming up, those dollars are-
We will do it on a reimbursement basis to a, for those costs spent on a person, an individual in Alpharetta, and so they will, we'll try to avoid putting things in our accounting system that says the name or address, but there'll be a way in which they can tell us this person, and we can audit that they're there, they're going to certify to us and validate that, that they do live in the city. In fact, part of the grant agreement will have our link to our GIS system and saying, please ensure that, that they live in the city.
Thank you. On page, forgive me, it's the second page of your application, there are six, you, you said you were awarding funding to five, there are six listed.
Yes, North Metro Miracle League has not fully completed their application, probably the best way to say it, it's right now maybe missing some things we haven't really-
Understood.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions from council at this time? Seeing none, thank you, Director Harris, I appreciate it. Ms. Cobb, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
We do not, sir.
But if anyone would like to come forward and speak on the Vulnerable Population Grant Program Award Recommendations, now is your chance to come forward and speak. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, sir. I move to approve the award of the Alpharetta Vulnerable Population Grant Funds as presented, and authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents.
Second. I don't, I was, my only guess was, we typically would put up to an amount-
I, I saw it on the second pages, I was just finishing, it wasn't on my, my, my script, but I'll amend that to not to exceed two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand.
Are you okay with it?
Yes, I'm, I accept that, yes.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Binder, and a second by Councilwoman Richard, any discussion? Well, thank you, I appreciate those of you on our staff that have made this possible, and I appreciate the cooperation of council to come up with a program in short term to get the money to the people that need it, and the organizations that can get it in their hands, so. That being said, all those in favor of the motion to approve the Vulnerable Population Grant Program Award Recommendation up to an amount of not to exceed two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars, please vote yes, and it passes five-one. We can bring it back, Councilman Hypes?
I appreciate it.
So that'll wrap up the new business portion of tonight's meeting, and we'll move on to the workshop. We do have a few workshops, and the first one will be Alpha Loop Feasibility Study with Ms. Cook.
I'm going to let Darren Meyer walk you through the presentation. This has been a really fun project that we've worked with the residents in MKSK that led the charge, so we've got a good presentation for you tonight.
Looking forward to giving you an update on an effort that we've been working on since the beginning of this year, looking at the connection of the Alpha Loop Trail to the North Point District and the Big Creek Greenway. The, the connection that we're looking at has tremendous benefit in terms of extending the qualities that the Alpha Loop offers to the community, to the North Point District, and to one of the most sort of beloved regional assets in the Big Creek Greenway, but it's also a great connection potentially to the larger metro area. When you think about the plans that are in place from Artis BRT Station in the future, Path 400, all of these have the opportunity to be connected to the trail system and to the Alpharetta community as well through this effort. Our team involved MKSK as the lead consultant, Tool Design Group was our transportation consultant, and we worked closely with the community throughout these, this project, and of course, GDOT, MARTA, ARC, et cetera, as well. As I mentioned, we began early this year, is that feedback, James, from my? Okay. It's, it's all right with me, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't-
No, it's the wire going to my mic, I'm trying to find this point where it'll stop.
Okay. No, no problem. We got started early this year, our public engagement took a little bit of a shift, as many things did, in, in February and March with the pandemic, but we, we had some great input from the community, and I'll, I'll share the ways that we went about that. So our first public meeting was a virtual public meeting, we had really great feedback to our survey, we had over three hundred responses to the exercises we had on the virtual survey, and several thousand views to our webpage as well. If you want me to pause, that's fine, I can keep going, or-
As long as it's just me that's distracted, you'll be okay.
Okay. In addition to that online survey and online meeting that we had, we did an intercept survey, and you can see the images of some of the signs we placed around the community, we did over fourteen hundred direct mailers out to stakeholders and residents and businesses who are adjacent to the project, to get their input through that venue as well. And then we were fortunate to have a really beautiful day in late July, where we had a public meeting out onsite at Morrison Lake, and had four community members come out and share with us their thoughts on our work on the project to date. This is an overview of the alignment of our proposed connection for the Alpha Loop Trail. One of the things I wanted to point out here, this is a graphic that we'll be using similarly throughout this, the solid white and orange line is what you might think of as the main line for the Alpha Loop connection, but as important, some of the dashed lines show the connections to that route. So one of the really key considerations is we started to look how the route moved through this district, was how can we connect the neighborhoods, the businesses, the employment centers to that trail connection, so that's where you see a lot of those arrows. In addition, particularly for the portion that runs along Georgia 400, you really, you know, you can't, you certainly can't move out into the freeway to get off the trail, your only movement is in the opposite direction, so we wanted to make sure we had enough alternative routes for people to access the trail and get on and off the trail throughout there that would make them feel comfortable and safe moving through the district as well. So we sort of split this into three focus areas, the first one, here we're looking southwest with North Wind Summit sort of at the lower edge of the view, and 400 running along the left. The, the sort of critical piece of this first focus area was the crossing of Haynesbridge Road. So you can see in this plan view on the right-hand side, that crossing of the trail over Haynesbridge Road towards the southbound on-ramp to 400, and then it sort of continues on towards Morrison Lake and to the southwest. This view shows that crossing at Haynesbridge Road, so the, the photographer's view has North Wind Summit to their back, and they're looking towards the on-ramp on a southbound 400 here, so you can see that can be a little bit of a daunting crossing. So as we went through, listened to the community feedback, did some of our analysis, there were really two crossing options that we explored. One was enhancing the existing at-grade crossing, there is a marked crossing out there today that you saw in the photo, and, and those enhancements really focused on two things. So the channelized right turn, the little pork chop that's there, looking at adjusting the radii of that with a truck apron to slow things down a little bit, a raised tabletop for the crossing, a couple of options that could be added if there's issues with compliance there, but also looking at signalization. So if you're coming from North Wind Summit, waiting to cross, looking at the signalization of that signal there, so you don't have conflicts with right-hand turns with people attempting to cross. So the at-grade crossing was the first option we looked at. We did also look at a tunnel as a second option, and the biggest sort of aster-
Thank you, I apologize, I think we've got a question from council at this time. Councilman Hypes?
Yeah, you got to a slide that I had a question about with the at-grade crossing and also the photograph.
Uh huh.
Would it be beneficial to have a center pedestrian island as a safety point? As an example, at the hock light in front of Smoke Jack, you can get there, and even if cars are going, you're, you're at a safer place in, yeah. Is, is that feasible, advisable, not advisable for reasons that you, you know, you would know?
Yeah, the median refuge is ideal, I believe that's not shown just to accommodate the, the required turning radii there, but that's something that we can revisit to see if that's potential, to create that median refuge.
Pete, while we're talking about that, are there GDOT restrictions that would prevent us from doing that?
Actually, I think GDOT is realigning this on-ramp with the Georgia 400 project, so what is being shown may have to move to the west.
Oh, okay, so the crosswalk may end up going where the island is in-
Negative, the, all the, this isn't, so where it says Alpha Loop 12 feet up there on the screen, on the left-hand side, GDOT's new right turn lane entrance onto Georgia 400 does encroach in that area, they redo their entrance point to the Georgia 400 Express.
Okay.
So, but the left turn, the gentleman's correct, the left turn movement will make it extremely difficult for the tractor-trailers to make that turning movement if you bulk that island further out, for a protective median, so which, that's got to be reconfigured, that whole intersection's got to be reconfigured to accommodate what Councilman Hypes is trying-
But if you don't move the island out, can you move the crosswalk back?
Yes, there's different things you could do to accommodate such, yes. And Haynesbridge is a truck route, so we will have tractor-trailers on that road.
All right, I believe we've got a couple of other questions, Councilwoman Burnett, and then Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell, after Councilwoman Burnett.
Looking at, looking at this with Haynesbridge Road and the access, it looks like to be, it looks to be eight lanes, is that, am I, am I correct with what I'm looking at? You, you may have to go back, I was just, I simply counted them. I was wondering if, if this is going to be a walkable area, and it's going to be so heavily trafficked instead of, in lieu of Councilmember Hypes's opinion about the, what was, what was the word he used, the refuge? Could we scrambled sidewalk it and just have people cross one time? Or is that, I mean, that is eight, it looked to be eight lanes of traffic, north and south, on the, on the previous, what, I don't know if it was the previous slide, but it was the slide we just saw prior to this. I don't want to strangle anybody in the middle of eight lanes of traffic, that's not safe.
It's, it's, if it's not, it's close to eight, if, yeah, they got the turn lane, so yeah, you got the right turn lane onto Georgia 400, well, it's a left turn lane into the public land development, and Haynesbridge Road is a six-lane road.
Thank you. While you're up here, I know we're heading toward the, the tunnel concept, but give us a comparison, the tunnel that we're just now completing at Winward, this would be roughly half of that width, is that correct?
Winward is four lanes plus the median, this would probably be like, not quite double the length. We had to go further out on, for the tunnel underneath on Winward, just to accommodate the grades that we had to work with, and that cost was around one-point-five billion dollars to one-point-seven-five.
Okay, so if we pull it more west, then that, that actually would shorten it from being right there at the intersection.
It's still going to be, you know, I, for rough numbers, without doing any measurements, just shy of twice the length of Winward, probably.
Yeah, okay, thank you, sir.
And just because we were on that point, I believe there may be issues with the property that you would have to access that tunnel on if you moved it further west, so there, there will be challenges when we come to that point in making those decisions. Any other questions before we start back with the presentation? I just thought it might be better, if, if they were going to be thinking of these questions the whole time, they might not be able to focus so much on what we're talking about, so, thank you, sir, I appreciate it, and apologize for the interruption.
So we did look at several other options in addition to at-grade crossing, we looked at an at-grade crossing which went up to Lakeview and back down, we looked at a tunnel crossing, we looked at a bridge crossing, and the, the first of those two that I mentioned, going up to Lakeview and the bridge crossing, had such significant feasibility hurdles, they, they really did pass muster in terms of sort of the, the relative cost benefit as we moved through our feasibility study, but we did look at a tunnel option, and with the tunnel option, as I was starting to mention before, the sort of asterisk there is that it is, what we're showing here is a non-ADA compliant tunnel. what we're showing here is a non-ADA compliant tunnel, meaning that the ramps that you would need to make it ADA compliant would require, you know, enough property to make that happen, that you have some significant impact on adjacent properties. So this is a solution that we have used in other communities where you have an ADA compliant at-grade crossing and a non-compliant tunnel. So it's not unheard of as a solution. But we did, these were the two options that we presented publicly along with notes about the bridge and the Lakeview crossing that we studied as well. But those had even more significant hurdles. Any questions about details on those other alternatives or on the Haynesbridge crossing? The next stretch was really the piece that's parallel to 400. So in this view, you can see just a piece of Morrison Lake on the right-hand side of the view. You can see the artisan which is, you know, under construction, largely constructed Fulton Science Academy and then tying in Fanfare Way. Couple of things that I wanted to point out on this view. I mentioned before how important it is when we look at this trail itself in terms of how you connect to that trail. So we did look at some of the adjacent neighborhoods and where there might be some modest improvements in terms of marked crosswalks or other items which could help facilitate access to the trail. So the letter A that you see on here indicates some of those locations where we might be able to improve the access from adjacent neighborhoods to the trail. And also, there's a dark red arrow sort of in the lower right-hand corner which shows the current location that's planned for the BRT station and overpass that's being developed in conjunction with the State Route 400 express lanes. This is a view showing where Fanfare ties into Encore Parkway. So this is where the trail that's sort of run parallel to 400 bends down and crosses over 400 on Encore Parkway. So one of the things that you'll note here is that if you look where Fanfare comes in from the right-hand side of this photo, there is no access from the west or south side of Encore Parkway. There's no crossing there. So one of the options that we looked at was to, to create that crossing across Encore Parkway that you can see in the view here that breaks across that existing median. So this shows the proposed intersection of Fanfare and Encore Parkway. As we work our way down towards Big Creek Greenway, this shows Encore Parkway itself. We're looking north, so the bridge is sort of ahead of us up the hill. And we looked at sort of two different conditions for Encore Parkway. This shows what exists today to orient you to what's out there today. You have bike lanes in each direction, a six-foot tree lawn and an eight-foot sidewalk. And what we looked at is in a potential interim condition, adding what would be a buffer for that bike lane. So adding another degree of separation to help with the comfort of the user there. And the reason that we would look at that option and even what's proposed in the next slide is that as we had our surveys and our input with the community, the sort of predominant sentiment with trail users is low stress and safety and comfort being on the trail. And so certainly bike lanes are great additions in the community and can be feasible, but the desire that we heard loud and clear was that having the sort of standard Alpha Loop condition, which is the 12-foot mixed-use trail, would be ideal, which is what you see in this view. So it could be that the buffered bike lane is an interim condition at a lower cost, which then allows you to sort of have ultimately the vision for the 12-foot mixed-use pass which you see on the right-hand side of the view here along Encore Parkway. Very similar to that, along North Point Center East, this is a critical connection to the mall and the areas that are redeveloping as part of the North Point Mall, also the future connection to the BRT station. So here, we're looking towards the mall with Encore Parkway at our back. We did sort of a high-level look at traffic and the eastbound sort of inbound lanes to the mall offered the opportunity to potentially recapture some of that real estate for this facility. So what exists today is shown here. You have two lanes, eastbound taking you in towards the mall. There's also a turn lane at each of the access points into the parking lots there that are on either side. First option, very similar to Encore Parkway, is to look at a buffered bike lane along there, leaving the existing curbs and lanes as they are. And again, preference is part of our community input surveys ultimately was to have the 12-foot mixed-use path which would connect there. So in this case, you would go down to one lane, but you would still have the turn lanes along North Point Center East. And then the last piece is the connection to the Big Creek Greenway itself. So here we have the Greenway right below us at the bottom of the picture. You can see Encore Parkway working its way sort of from the upper left down in here. And so this is where we have sort of tie-in with North Point Center East. We have the crossing over North Point Parkway. And then you have a little bit of steep grade, right, as you get into that floodplain area of the Big Creek Greenway. And ultimately, we connect to the trailhead there. So this shows the existing view. You can see the car wash in the distance and some of the trees on the left where you tie into the sort of beautiful Big Creek Greenway area. And this shows the proposed conditions where we'd have some decorative crosswalk treatments that are in line with our placemaking plan and have gone through the wringer in terms of looking at GDOT compliance as well. And ultimately, the idea of potentially of a gateway park there is a great threshold and trailhead to the Big Creek Greenway and the Alpha Loop also on the left-hand side of view. So the last piece we wanted to share with you had to do with amenities and placemaking. So we looked at the route itself. I wanted to share this. One of the things that you'll observe obviously day-to-day when you look at the use on the portions of the trail that are built, rather similar trails, is when you have trails that move through mixed-use urban areas, there's a lot of foot traffic as well as bicycle traffic. And so when you look at these curves on the left which show sort of the typical trip lengths, you can see that about 20 to 30 minutes is where you see that bend where a lot of trips by foot work within that 20 to 30-minute range and the number of trips that exceed that sort of tails off considerably. But that 20 to 30 minutes can vary quite a bit depending on your ambulatory ability. So if I have my three-year-old son and if I'm holding his hand and walking, I'm moving at a lot different pace than if I'm out walking my dog. And so we wanted to take that into consideration when we look at the spacing of amenities, places to sit, et cetera. So this shows sort of the walking distances. If you start at Haynesbridge Road near North Point Summit and you walked this future trail length, it's about a 45-minute walk. And so we have some of the sort of breakdown of those distances there. And again, that helped inform the location and placement of amenities along there. The other thing that we did is we looked at the fact you have some really sort of signature experiences along this section of trail. So Morrison Lake is beautiful and sort of amazing. And even some of the stretches of the corridor along 400 are fantastic. And of course, the Big Creek Greenway we know is wonderful as well. So we, I'll show you here in a moment some of the thoughts surrounding how we capture those areas. But those are areas that we thought of as kind of the stop-and-stay moments where because they offer unique experience or potentially even a future park experience, it's a great sort of mini trailhead or place to stop and take a pause. We've also identified with the big purple G, the opportunity for some gateways to really announce the entry to this trail system. And those sort of build on our placemaking ideas as well. So one of the thoughts I wanted to compare to Encore Park and Brook Street Park, the two areas that I mentioned before around Morrison Lake and Gateway Park. And the notion here is that when we look at the routing of the trail through these areas, we want to sort of flip the switch. And instead of thinking of the buffer areas along 400 as sort of residual or leftover space, how can we think of that as positive space? As part of the portfolio of great green space and parks in the community. And you can see some of the comparative dimensions there. And these are some qualities that those spaces could take on where we're really building on what we heard through our community surveys and the natural features that are out there to sort of build on those to create these great natural environments that you can experience. You can see in some of these examples. And these are some of the elements through the placemaking plan that have potential incorporation into this as well. So from a cost and constructability standpoint, this exhibit shows on a map view these different phases. You know, when we went through the feasibility study process, I mentioned before, for example, the Haynesbridge Crossing, we looked at an at-grade scenario as well as tunnel scenario. Along Encore Parkway, we looked at buffered bike lanes as well as an expanded sidewalk section. So that's where you see the deltas in these costs, looking at those different conditions. We also have not summed these because this is a project that lends itself very easily to being done in phases. Just because we studied it from Haynesbridge to Big Creek Greenway doesn't mean that it needs to be one half a project. So you have different options in terms of the level of improvements that are done and different options in terms of how it's phased. So this gives you kind of a snapshot of the feasibility study level estimates that were done as part of this as well. So that's a quick run-through of the route, the amenities and some of the feasibility elements that went into studying this. So I'd be happy to answer any questions or hear your thoughts.
Have any questions from council? Councilmember Burnett?
If you had to take a guess, if you, can you go back to the previous slide? $20 million total? Is that your thought?
I could do a quick back-of-the-envelope here, but it's just under $21.
All right.
Does that include the tunnel? Has any feasibility at all, given what the tunnel was drawn as, doesn't meet ADA compliance, unless we're gonna do an elevator or something like that?
We don't like elevators.
Am I correct in saying you had mentioned as long as you have an at-grade crossing and then a tunnel that doesn't meet ADA compliance, then you're good with federal guidelines?
Well, so at the level of-
Both.
At the level of feasibility study, I mean, the example that I gave where it's been done before, I mean, there are a lot of discussions with, you know, city risk management, with, you know, the sort of regional, in that case, it was the Great Lakes region of the ADA. I mean, there was a lot of work that was done to ensure that that was, so there's a model there, but it, you know, it's something that we'd have to dig into much more specifically here. So I, it's certainly within the realm of feasibility, but we'd have to dig into those.
Not ideal, but could be done.
And I should note, one thing that I meant to add, when we looked at the sort of Lakeview loop up and down in addition to the bridge and the tunnel, we, we did consider a lot the actual compliance with those. So, you know, we talked about an example, I believe it was at North Carolina State, and you can think of some examples where you have some bridge crossings over roads that are so circuitous in terms of the amount of ramp that you have to go up and the amount of east-west that people just cut across. And so when you have an existing marked crosswalk at Haynesbridge Road, the idea of going up, you know, 1,600 feet and then back, you know, going over a half a mile to get back down to cross the street, including having an almost similar crossing at Lakeview where you have sort of a dedicated right turn, you know, onto the Parkway there, that's why it didn't sort of make the cut in terms of the feasibility study because we just thought, boy, at that point, a lot of people are just gonna go right across an existing marked crosswalk there. So we might as well make that safer.
One question that popped in my mind, and this diagram's a good point of it, that multi-use trail there on the west side of Georgia 400, did y'all give much thought to how that's gonna look? You mentioned that some of those areas are really nice trails, but there's gonna be a 30, 40-foot tall sound barrier along there. Did y'all give any thought to the experience once Georgia 400 and GDOT builds those sound barriers?
We, we have, I guess, what would be the current version of their proposed right-of-way and limit of construction. I don't know that we have the proposed extent of the sound barriers yet as part of the development of this. We know that they're, they're being studied right now. So certainly, when we did our visual preference surveys with the community, we showed the sound walls and in different ways that those could be treated. But yeah, that, that would certainly be an element along there. And we did look at options, again, in the interest of feasibility of shifting it up to west side or Fanfare, sort of having it further away. But you just ran into a lot of conflict points that made it extremely difficult there as well. So it's definitely a consideration as the 400.
I think Ms. Cook has something she wants to interject here.
I think that we also, when we put the survey together, we were worried about that same thing, what people would think with that experience. So we changed some of the pictures and everything on the survey because a lot of the pictures we had in the survey showed trees beside of it. So we went ahead and put in the survey where it could actually be a wall, you know, and did you want it to be a green wall or a painted wall if that's what ends up beside the trail. So we thought about that as part of the survey.
Okay. Thank you. I just, it occurred to me that we're gonna have to really work on making that a much more inviting experience once there's a big concrete barrier there.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Richard?
Excuse me. Thank you. Darren, I just first want to say thank you to your, your group and to community development. This is a really comprehensive study. And I think that the whole public outreach coincided with COVID pandemic. And I thought you guys did a fabulous job of pivoting from what your typical public outreach would have been to the various tools that you used. And I think you really did a great job of pivoting there. You mentioned earlier that this would, obviously, this is a significant project and would likely be broken down into phases. My question to you, and I don't want to put you on the spot here, but given how, how close you are to this project, my question is, do you have, do you see a particular phase here that you would identify sort of as the priority, the first phase that we should consider?
What we know today, I would say the Haynesbridge Crossing would be up there with the 360 tech development and what's happening as part of that. But, you know, as everyone in this room knows, there's so much that's fluid with GDOT and MARTA along with, you know, other, other projects that are going on, you know, as well as funding opportunities related to the Big Creek Greenway and Gateway Park. So I also don't think that it needs to necessarily be built sequentially. You know, you could work from both ends because along this whole length, you know, you're connecting the North Point District better to the Greenway or you're connecting the neighborhoods on West Side Parkway better to the, you know, so there's a number of advantages to each of these individual lengths as well. But yes, I would say that the Haynesbridge Crossing, at least at the moment, sort of rises to the top.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? We can have a discussion. It's a workshop. If we have no other questions, now's the time to give your feedback. Just for the public's notice, this is a workshop. This is just to give input to our staff and the public about council's feelings, direction. But there is no voting item. So it's just for us to give as much feedback to the staff and how we should best proceed.
I'll state a couple of things and I'll ask, pose a question to the rest of you. I think that we have an understanding that we have a taxed allocation district that is going to have hardships for more years than we thought based on property values. And when I look at the things that the people in this community like, it is always the Greenway that is at the top. And if North Point needs a shot in the arm, then it needs a shot in the arm. And if it's $20 million to get there, I think the cost of doing nothing greatly outweighs the cost of what it would be today. And I would be very in favor if this was a consensus project among the council to send something to the March cycle so that the voters could have a say. If they wanted to invest here and it was $20 million without us making a decision, spending money one way or the other, if they wanted to look at this and they knew that it was going to have a millage rate impact, I'm fine with them making that decision because we can't sit here and let this area continue to rot. And that is what is going to happen. And I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say that there aren't alternate ways to do it, but this, but great things happen in this community and we choose to get ahead when times are down. You know, Avalon may have not happened without the 2008 recession. I would argue that people regionally know this community based on that asset. Right, wrong, or indifferent. I think that there are other great attributes, but trails are more popular. They're not less popular. I'm not a bicycle lane person, and I will be the first person to say it, but plenty of people move here because they are. And so to continue to have workshop after workshop of what we can't afford to do, if there was no, if there was a 25-year bond out there that costs us an additional $1 million a year to our budget and letting the voters decide if they wanted us to invest there or not without putting a stake in the ground, I'm fine with giving it to them. If it costs us a tenth of a point on a millage rate, that's a decision that they can make as a part of that ballot question. I'd, you know, it's not, it wouldn't be us sitting here messing with taxes. It would be them. And I think that there's enough out there, if this area is gonna see invest- And I think that there's enough out there, if this area is going to see investment, sooner or later, Kathy and I have done this tour with several people in Atlanta, and they're all really interested in what we're doing, and they look at us as new, but we also have to continue to be forward-thinking and think about what that looks like. I don't know that the average business owner or the average homeowner cares about $9 a year on their millage rate. And maybe they do, but that's a decision that they get to make. And I would be perfectly willing to let that happen and know that this community's got a really wildly robust tax digest in over 25 years. The cost of doing nothing is, to me, is a decision that they should make for the sole purpose that construction costs year over year over year grow exponentially. And if we did it now, and that was a decision that they wanted to make, it would pay dividends to that five-mile stretch of Alpharetta that nothing else will. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions at this point? Thank you, sir. We appreciate all the work your team put into it.
Thank you.
So that'll wrap up the Alpha Loop feasibility study for this evening, and we'll move on to the next workshop item, which is UDC text amendment North Point overlay. Director Cook, you are back up.
We did not stack at all at North Point, but it seems that way. The next item is also a workshop item, and this is consideration of text amendments to the UDC subsection 2.10.2, North Point overlay use and density. To amend the overlay boundaries in the priority areas, the council within priority areas can authorize additional density as long as they have, of course, to go over eight units per acre. You would have to meet other minimum requirements, and then you would have to increase the open space, civic space and amenity space. So what we're looking to do is to add this parcel here. This is part of, this is at the corner of Kimball Bridge and North Point Parkway. And then also this property, which is at Morrison Parkway in Haynesbridge. And then we have the property that is south of Mansell. For some reason, in 2008, when we did the original North Point LCI map, we cut through some of these parcels, and they have the same owner. So going back, we're looking to add these three pieces. So these two pieces, we actually have, it's the same owner, and we split it through the middle. Didn't make a lot of sense. Same thing happened at this intersection. And then here, this is different owners, but really, we didn't see a reason that only this front part is within the North Point LCI area. So they have different architectural requirements, different requirements. And then here, adjacent to it, oh, sorry. Yeah, this is, I keep forgetting that this is kind of off. So you don't really want to split properties where there's different requirements and only have part of that property in the North Point overlay. So that is what we are proposing, but before we put it on the agenda for the planning commission and city council and made those code changes, we wanted to come to the workshop and get some comments and thoughts.
Any questions or comments from council? Councilwoman Merkel?
Yeah. Okay, so that was 2008. You'd mentioned, Karen, 2018. That's why I was kind of confused in our conversation earlier. No, I think, I think it's definitely a great idea to continue, because right now, what you've got starred down there south of Mansell, it's kind of on an island, and it's an island stuck on the Roswell border. So I think inclusion into the rest of that corridor increases the value of that area, and it gives it some more identity to flow through as we come up through there. So I'm very pleased that this is finally coming about. Very much interested, hadn't seen it through.
That's a good point. When we wrote this report, we said two shuttered restaurants, and it's actually three. So there is, there's a lot changing. And you saw earlier with the old Arby's that that became Medical Center. So we want to, we want to keep open the opportunities.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Richard?
I would just agree. I think that we, you know, the areas that Kathy's identified, especially on the south of Mansell, we need tools to work with there to draw investment and redevelopment in the area, and I think that encompassing it in the overall LCI is really the right way to go. So thank you for bringing it forward.
Anyone else?
I concur. I concur with what both of them have just said.
And I fully support it. I think, once again, that area south of Mansell is going to be critical to the redevelopment of the whole corridor as one of the pin corners. And it certainly makes sense for the other parcels that are likely to be developed to be consistent with the properties adjacent to them, so I would support it. Any other comments or questions from council?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Appreciate you bringing this forward. So we'll go ahead and wrap up the UDC text amendment North Point overlay, and the third workshop will be park rules ordinance update. But we have decided to defer that. That's correct. I didn't make a note of that in my vote. So the park rules ordinance update, staff, they wanted another look at that and take some further adjustments perhaps. So that'll wrap up the workshop agenda for this evening, which wraps up most of our items. We do still have public comment available, so if there's anyone here that would like to come forward and speak at this time, now's your opportunity to do so.
Mayor Gilvin, I do have one public comment card.
Okay.
Judah Jackson, 1175 Cicero Drive, Alpharetta.
Would you like to come forward at this time?
Mr. Mayor members of the council, thank you for your indulgence this evening. My name's Judah Jackson. I'm the chief operating officer with Life Map. We're an Alpharetta-based business. The purpose of our endeavor business-wise, we sit in a very nice council chamber. We recently constructed a building. For about the past 20 years, buildings like this have been built based on three-dimensional models seeded with information about every component in the building. Unfortunately, after the construction documents are completed, all too often, these models are set aside or archived on servers. My company has pioneered a method of making these models and all of the information in them available to first responders for use in an emergency. Now, if you've ever dealt with pre-incident planning with first responders, you know the challenges that they face. Despite the fact that this building is probably represented by a very detailed model somewhere, if you were to have a medical emergency right here tonight, first responders might have difficulty finding this room, finding you, and offering you assistance. So my company developed a method of allowing the first responders access to these models in first person, so they're guided through the model as though they're already on the scene, en route to the facility. Now, this method has been tested and approved. In September of 2019, we helped the city of Hattiesburg, Mississippi, acquire $1.2 million in federal FEMA grant money for the deployment of the system in their public schools. We're also in progress with other municipalities, including Jackson, Mississippi, and we're also engaged with the GSA in converting an FBI building that was built in the 1950s so that it can take advantage of the same system. We, the ask tonight is to open a conversation with the city of Alpharetta, particularly the Public Safety Commission and your police and fire chiefs, so they might evaluate the system. And if they feel that it's effective, take advantage of our expertise so that we may be able to get access to the same federal grant money that's available for these endeavors so that the city of Alpharetta, which we call our home, can be protected by the technology that we, that we create here. Now, I have an information package here that includes a brief description of the system, and also a QR code that will allow you to access a video that shows a little bit of what it might look like in progress, as well as a letter of support from Congressman Benny Thompson, who chairs the Department of Homeland Security for the US Congress, as well, and it also mentions, although we don't have his letter in here, our Republican representative, Steven Palasso, is also sponsoring this effort on the level at Washington, DC. That's, that's all I have. I wanted to leave this information with you, if possible, and perhaps open a conversation. And we want to tell you, we really appreciate being able to have our business located here in Alpharetta. Alpharetta's been good to us, and we look forward to helping you protect the citizens and the first responders of Alpharetta as well. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. I appreciate you joining us this evening. I'll make sure and pass that along. I believe Director Robison just shut out the door a few minutes ago, so he missed your presentation, but we'll make sure he gets the information. Thank you, sir. Were there any other public comment cards?
No, sir. There is not.
Okay. But if there is anyone here that still would like to make another public comment, now's your opportunity to do so. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Reports? Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell?
Yes, sir. I just have a brief one. I'd like to make the announcement of Matthew Cottahari as my appointment to the Arts and Cultural Commission. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Councilman Hypes?
I would like to congratulate our fellow councilman, Jason Binder, on his upcoming birthday this week.
Ooh.
Wait, now, is it a round number?
No. No. It's a round.
But anyway, that is my report.
Councilwoman Richard?
Yes, I'd like to, I have a fabulous announcement to make. ARC had their annual state of the breakfast, annual state of the region breakfast last Friday, and as they typically do, they also have development awards of excellence that they give out. And Alpharetta was identified as, as was named in receiving the visionary planning award of the year for the placemaking plan that MKSK did for the city a year and a half ago. And I'm sorry that Darren and Donnie have left, but they've been made aware that they've also, that we have won the award. And James has a quick little video that we're going to show that the ARC showed during the
The North Point placemaking plan aims to form 600 acres along the North Point Parkway in Alpharetta into a walkable mixed-use district. The plan envisions vibrant community spaces, a wide array of housing options, acres of green space, new office and retail development, and public art, all linked by two multi-use trails, a continuation of the Alpha Loop and the existing Big Creek Greenway. The North Point placemaking plan redefines an auto-centric area in North Fulton as a healthy, connected community with green infrastructure, smart technology, and an improved pedestrian environment.
The mayor just pointed out that the clicking noise stopped when Darren left. Didn't realize that. But anyhow, congratulations Kathy and her team, and to MKSK for fabulous placemaking. And James, we can get that on our, the video?
Yes, once I clean it up a little bit.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. That's it.
Any other reports? I just have a couple of items. First of all, it's recently come to our attention that the city charter apparently only allows city council members to vote by telephone or remotely if they are actually ill or something of that effect. And in today's world, it seems like we need to have allowances for quarantining or, you know, concerns of exposure, perhaps, in a viral environment. So I am going to be working with staff to bring forward an opportunity. Our next meeting won't be next Monday. It will be the fifth Monday, which we ordinarily don't meet. Hopefully, we'll have an opportunity to change that code so that it will give us more flexibility in today's world. We certainly don't want to abuse the privilege, and I don't believe anybody on council ever would, but I do, I wanted to let council know that it has been noted, and we'll try, we may have to, if we want to do it before that meeting, perhaps hold a short emergency meeting just to get that in place, to make that change. But I'll be working with our attorneys and our staff to bring something forward as quickly as possible, just to allow that additional flexibility in today's world. Second one is, it's been a heck of a year, but we are a truly blessed community, and we won't be here next Monday for me to tell you Happy Thanksgiving, but I think I speak for all of the members of this council. We are tremendously grateful, and in a very difficult year, we have received a lot of blessings individually and as a community, and though it's difficult to see those in the headlines or to appreciate them sometimes, but we have been blessed. We hope that you and your families will continue to be safe throughout the holidays and have a wonderful Thanksgiving next week. Thank you. And with that, we will close out the tonight's meeting. We'll see you all next time. I actually got a lot quicker tonight than I thought we would. We got a lot quicker than I thought we would.
Yeah. Thank God.
Have to text Darren and tell him it was his fault it was doing that.
I want to check that. That explains